Good morning, everybody, and welcome to another episode of The Rad Life. Today, I have a candidate for city council in the city of San Clemente, which is where I live, that is running in the 2020 elections, which is less than a month away. As part of my series that I do with interviews with candidates that are running for elected office every election cycle, I again want to take a moment and extend invitation to anybody who's watching this. If you are interested on being on The Rad Life, it doesn't cost anything. It's about an hour of a platform for you to share your thoughts, your ideas, your hopes, aspirations, what you look forward to doing if elected to the office that you are running for. Please contact me directly or easily you can go to my production company, Golden Seal Productions, and the website is goldensealproductions.com. And you can use the online booking link to book your spot on The Rad Life to sit down with me for an hour like Zain Wu is doing today. And it's very organic, very conversational. I just, for clarity for people who don't know, I am a non-party preference registered voter. People like to say that I'm an equal opportunity griller, regardless of which political party you're supported for, supported by. In this particular case, it's the city council campaign. So you are by nature not, you know, one nonpartisan. But I have had congressmen, I've had other sitting elected officials also on. So, and people running for office. So by all means, please reach out to me and book your slot. I am focusing on candidates for the next two weeks, and we will have other guests as well in between. But I've got a couple of people already lined up, and I really do want to offer that opportunity as a platform for anybody running for office in San Clemente for sure, Orange County at large, or even further, because with Zoom these days, we are able to do this without a problem. So without further ado, I would like to bring on my guest for the hour, gentleman who is a registered architect, Zain Wu, that was also a current planning commissioner in the city of San Clemente. He has served for a couple of years and has now decided to throw his hat in the ring for a seat at city council. Zain, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
So good morning, first of all. I'm glad to have you on the show. Thank you for being here. I was saying that you were a, you are a architect by trade. You are a current sitting member of the planning commission in the city of San Clemente. And because you don't have enough on your plate to do, you decided to run for city council.
Right. Thank you for inviting me. It's my pleasure to be here. I have tons of stuff on my plate, but I can take more.
You know what? I know that about you. So perfect, perfect pickup on that one. So before we start though with the whole political thing, I really want to give our people the opportunity to know about you, about your, your journey to both San Clemente, to professionally what you do, to why you find this calling to be of service, both, you know, starting at, you might have had before, but when I met you, I remember we were both actually on the docket for planning commission, and we were interviewed. And I remember sitting in there and listening to you being interviewed. And again, there's a kindred spirit professionally. And I was happy to see somebody with your background basically being brought on the planning commission, because I thought as a community, we benefit from that. So if you wouldn't mind, take a minute and just give us a little background about Zain and, you know, how you got to be in San Clemente, how you got to do what you're doing. And we can then enter into what's going on right now politically.
Thank you. I was born in China. I went to one of the best universities in China, Tsinghua University, and I got my bachelor degree in architecture. In 1999, at the age of 28, I followed my wife to this country. I immigrated here. I went to USC, pursued a graduate study. I got a dual master's degree, master of planning and master of architecture from School of Public Policy and then School of Architecture. After that, I worked for about a dozen years in corporate, at large design firms, One, Orion, and then the next one, Newport Beach. Worked for my second employer for about 10 years, climbed, climbed my corporate ladder, became one of the youngest VP with the firm. After a few years, when I felt I hit a plateau, I left the firm and I started my own small practice. It's really a very small designing studio. At the time, I always wanted to serve the community. And, you know, back in China, there's no chance, right? You have to be something special or connected to being in that a power group. Here, so when I worked for other companies, I want to, but I couldn't make that commitment because of my work schedule. Suddenly, I have my own small business. I have a flexible, flexible work schedule. So when the city wants to interview candidates for planning commission, I volunteered to go. They didn't pick me first time, but they did a second.
I remember, I remember, I remember you ran twice. You were the second time.
Just a few months later, the first time it was a vacant seat for a couple of months. But a few, a few months later, one of the city council member called me. I was hesitant. I'm not sure if I want to go or not, but I received a call asking me to apply for it. I was encouraged by that, so I applied for it in the last minute. And after a few runs, I was the last one who got through and became appointed a planning commissioner. So from there, I spent two years and I was appointed unanimously by the city council then, and fast forward to today, I've been on planning machine and design review subcommittee for five years, a little over five years. And I also served one year on cultural advisory committee. That's my history of my involvement.
And that's, that's wonderful, because I think sometimes people, you know, commissioners especially, since they are assigned, unless you are very involved in, in, you know, and basically in San Clemente, very nosy and looking into everything that's going on, sometimes you don't really realize who is acting in those roles. And you only maybe come, you know, come in contact with them if you have a project that's in dispute or that, you know, something gets a little bit too noisy in the press about something that's going on. Or, you know, if you, like yourself, are running for higher office and all of a sudden it's like, well, who is this person? So how long have you been in San Clemente, Zain?
My family has lived in San Clemente for 16 years. At the time, my wife worked in San Diego. I worked in Orange County, Newport Beach. So when we decided to settle down to buy a home, and it has to be somewhere in the middle, and San Clemente is a perfect location.
You know, somewhere in the middle seems to be the whole purpose of this town. You and I were talking about this book right here, The Story of San Clemente, the Spanish Village by Homer Banks, that was actually commissioned by Ole Hansen in order to promote the town. I mean, you know, look, look, look how, they didn't really have to do big books. You could promote the town with a book this small, right? But, but this book actually speaks about the center point between Los Angeles and San Diego and San Clemente being perfect because of its proximity to both. And so I find it very interesting that even when you were looking to work to basically build, buy a home, that's still applied. Is where is a center point that makes sense and has a quality of life that I want for me and my family, San Clemente?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fortunate enough to have the same book I got from eBay. Somewhere in the middle is just a metaphor. It's not just about buying a home somewhere in the middle of your workplaces, but in our real life, a lot of time you have to find a, a, a position that is acceptable by both parties and be willing to compromise. A lot of time you end up with somewhere in the middle.
I don't, I don't know if you know this. This is something I just even shared just recently again, because it's something that is missed by a lot of people. And it's actually very important, and I shared it about a week or so ago. You just brought it up again. Is this, this compromise, this in the middle, and let's just use it metaphorically, in the middle, right? And it's a sense of community and a sense of thing, you know, there's two things about San Clemente I think a lot of people don't realize, or maybe they don't know, right? One is, and I'm putting my historical society board member for 15 years hat on for a second, right? But it basically, one is that the town really, what we see, like over 200 properties that we have that represent the historical envelope of the town, that a lot of those buildings were built probably at best within about a 10-year period, maybe even less. Because in 2026, 1928, I mean, you know, there was a boom. And we'll talk about it in a minute about how San Clemente is a planned community and how that relates to exactly kind of your expertise and what is continuing to be important. You know, one of the first planned communities in the United States is that the town really had a very short period of like, wow, here we are, starting, opening, whatever, before the depression hits in 1928, right? So it, which makes it even more fascinating for me that we still have the patina and the envelope that we have when we had such a short period of development, really, that was focused with the Ole Hansen vision. The other thing that I think a lot of people don't know, which I think is worth mentioning, and to your credit, bringing up the compromise issue and the middle ground issue, is that a lot of people don't realize that Ole Hansen was two things. He was progressive and he was a developer, like full-on developer. He had developed an area called Forest Park, I think it is, up in Seattle when he was mayor, after being mayor of Seattle, which has the same quality of life, experiential promise. But in that case, it was more like forest and greenery and mountain kind of five, not versus Spanish revival, right? So the skin of it was different, but the philosophy behind it was kind of the same. And that place still exists. Fritz Swegels has written about it very well. The other thing they don't realize is that, again, like I said, he was progressive. He was a Republican, progressive, conservative, on the, you know, follower of the bull moose party of Teddy Roosevelt. So you had a quote-unquote Republican progressive that was the visionary for the city of San Clemente. Then you had a financier that funded the vision that was a primary fundraiser for the Democratic Party and a close friend of Franklin Delano Roosevelt, of FDR. And many a times, you had FDR, and that gentleman's name was Hamilton Cotton, who basically lived in the Casa Pacifica, the one that's, that is now part of that whole Cotton's Point. You had a Republican and a Democrat, very, very involved. And you had a cousins of Teddy Roosevelt and Franklin Delano Roosevelt. And basically, they all came together in this little town of ours called San Clemente in one way or the other. And so I'm bringing only that up because I think sometimes in a heated times that we are in right now, we forget the importance of compromise and working towards a common goal, a common good.
Right. Well, local election is a nonpartisan election, and we based, we mostly focus on local issues. So if people can put that partisan thing aside, then that's the only time we can collaborate and work together to advance our common betterment. Unfortunately, this country has been divided, and San Clemente is no exception.
Yeah, we've not, we've not been spared for sure. But I, but I think, I'm sorry, and I know, I know it took a little bit of our time to do this, but I think it's super important when we have an opportunity these days to showcase and highlight the importance of that and what you just said. When it comes to everything being local, getting caught up in some of that divisiveness is really not in our best interest, because it doesn't really do anything to bring the community together. So.
That's right. So the first time I barely got in, but the second time I was unanimously reappointed by the city council. And the city council has, it's almost evenly divided, and they have very different view, but they all voted for me in the first run. So really, I don't, it shows that I, I can work with both aisles, and I do not put this ideology about the common interest of the community. I focus on issues and I want to solve problems for our community. That's how I operate.
So let's talk about that. And, and, and I think there's a direct correlation with what you do on a daily basis and that being part of your, just your DNA makeup. And you bring that to the good credit of the city at the planning commission, now potentially city council. So let's talk about that for a minute, because you also have an interesting perspective. And we kind of mentioned this about, you know, there's a lot of information here about how San Clemente is a, you know, was, was a plant community, there was pristine beaches, there was open land at the time, you know, you pretty much, you know, it was master plan. But you also have the perspective professionally to understand what that is like. You worked on master planning before. And the fact that we are in a different space today than we were maybe in 1926, plus the fact that you've been on the planning commission for half a decade and you have seen the stuff that have come through. So for people who are concerned about protecting, and which we all are in one degree or the other, protecting the uniqueness of San Clemente, the quality of life it represents, the built environment, very much part of that. Walk us through a little bit of how you perceive the future or the immediate present and the future of San Clemente relevant to things like community development. Where should our focuses be? What are some of the problems and issues that we have that we could do better at? How you, how would you bring, and what that, and indirectly, what you would be bringing to city council?
Sure. Well, the city of San Clemente was the first master plan community in the state of California. There were examples earlier than San Clemente nationwide. For example, Rattaburn in New Jersey and Riverside, Illinois. But San Clemente is the one first in the state of California. It was a master planned. Today, one can still find that the urban fabric is pretty much intact, except when Interstate 5 cuts through Southeastern, Southwest of San Clemente at a separate summer road. So you can see east, for example, east of some, or something, and the west of something, they wore one road. So that, that's our history, and we have, we still have a lot of historic structure and downtown, especially downtown and the northeast area. And that is our historical identity. And without those things, San Clemente is not a San Clemente we know of. So we must have preserved them in a sensitive way. At the same time, population has grown over the last century. And the people's lifestyle changed. So the building, the building environment has to adapt to that change. Over the last couple of decades, all the ranchland on the eastern side of Interstate 5 has been developed. Large swath, swath of land has been developed, just like typical American suburban, which is a little different fabric and texture, but it's okay. It adds a variety and adds choice of the people's living environment. What we're facing now is continue, we continue, we're continued under the pressure of the population growth to accommodate more people. And there's some pressing need. For example, commerce is an important thing for a city. Without a commerce, you don't have a city. You have a bedroom community. Most cities in history, they start from trade and commerce. And some, some start from a military fortress, but most are from commerce. And that's one thing. And then California is, has a housing crisis here. San Clemente is no exception. Like much of the South Orange County, we're having a housing crisis and we don't have enough affordable housing here. So, so those are, those are the needs that we need somehow to find out a way to accommodate. So for the future, we know that east of San Clemente, there are planning area A by Rancho Mission Viejo, that to be developed, but total road 241 is dead. That land sooner or later will still be, still be developed, but in a different way. So San Clemente can accommodate, incorporate that area eventually to accommodate more growth. In addition to that, there are some unutilized area or corridors such as Pico. I can see the Pico has a lot of potential, accommodated, some mixed use. Some of the retail can be reconfigured to accommodate a different type of development. And then South Alcaminorial has some vacant lot there, which I will probably initiate some review and revision of development standards to encourage some, some developments there. But the core is the downtown to Pierbo, and that's the essence of the San Clemente experience. And that needs to be very, very carefully studied and preserved. That's our public place. We have San Clemente Altidmo, which is great place, but that's private. So it's a little different. The public place, especially downtown T-zone to Pierbo, if you find the, if you name the single most important places in San Clemente, that's one, followed by North Beach.
Well, it's, it's the heart of the community. I mean, I mean that symbolically, but it also is really the heart of the community. I mean, there was a joke a number of years ago, I still, probably still applies, but maybe not to the same extent, is that if you were invited or knew that you were going to go to a meeting or had somebody was having a gathering or a meeting for some reason that was community-based, if you were not sure where it was, go to Cafe Calypso. And I mean, like, you know, I mean, it, it, it was almost like the, the, the city center, you know, in the old days, where the fountain was, where the women would basically wash the clothes. Like it was, it was the, the, the heart of the community. And I think this is one of those challenges that requires leadership. Is that, as you know, I've been involved for a number of years in different capacities and different things. But I think the difficulty is to, to talk to people about these very real things and challenges that we have that you mentioned. We have an issue with, you know, affordable housing. Now, whenever you say affordable housing, sometimes in South County, it's almost like you said, you know, project. You said, you know, tenement housing, you know, it's, it's squatter, it's, it's, you know. Affordable housing is to the benefit of everybody, including our aging community and seniors. I mean, there's a genuine real, real need for an alternative affordable housing or, you know, and, and again, we're South, South Orange County. So when you say the word affordable, the dollar amount that goes along with it is not the same as the dollar amount that goes along with, let's say if you were in, you know, I don't know, Chino, right? I mean, it's, it's a different reality. But I don't see anybody really taking the, the mantle of educating and leadership on this, which is absolutely needed, because as a community, we're going to need to develop those resources. Similarly, and you and I have talked about this, and I'd love to hear your opinion on this, is what do you, what do you feel at this point, given the nature and age and the build-out of the community, would be appropriate economic engine? Like we're talking about retail, you're talking, you brought up retail or commercial zones. The way we live our lives today in 2020 is different than the way we lived our lives even in 2015, you know, 2010. Commercial and retail is different, how we shop, our habits, all this stuff. What are some of the things that you perceive could be worth exploring as a community when it comes to this economic engine situation?
Well, our economic engine, first of all, the city has been built. So there's no more vacant land. So all we have, there are some inferior development opportunities. And but there's a large portion where we adapt to reuse. As I said, our building has to be adapted to fit the new lifestyle and new reality with aging population, the best way to retire, and it's aging place. So a lot of our current building, they don't meet those requirements. They don't, they don't fit the senior living lifestyle. So a lot of building over the time needs to be modified to accommodate that need. So that could be one, one big economic activity, that is to remodel those buildings to fit the, the need of our senior population. And then the other one is, we understand that the big box retailer is not working anymore. And it keeps going down over the last decade with the e-commerce coming up. But the, but the one segment of retail that is still working very well and is actually prospering is the experiential retail. Regardless that you can click a button and order something from Amazon or e-commerce website, the experience cannot be replaced by an online purchase. You have to be there to feel it. You have to feel the air. You have to feel the sounds, the ambiance, watch the people, hear it, listen to it, and feel it. So that experience, what we call them experiential architecture or experiential development, or sometimes we call them destination development. It's, it's an environment that people can go. They, they have shopping, dining, and entertainment, and those important components there that allows people to spend a lot of time there, lingering, and they can spend a day there also. So there are destination experience development like San Clemente, like Urban Spectrum, but our downtown could be that experience. It's even more fascinating because it offers a diversity and it's a public places unlike a private places.
Also, it's also, it also has a big difference.
It's a huge difference. It's more resilient.
It's authentic.
It's more authentic, it's more genuine. And when you have a history in that, when you have a history that adds to the flavor and richness of that experience, a new, new development just cannot have it.
No, you and I, you know, you and I, you and I know this professionally, okay? I mean, I shared this with you, okay? I used to work for a very well-renowned architectural firm that people would come to and give hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop something new that had the feel and experiential authenticity of being around for 400 years. And, and the reason why was because that experiential component had a direct dollars and cents positive return on investment. And so what we have in San Clemente is we literally have a, we live in history. We have a living history. The, the, the spectrum is a nice shopping center that has a nice Moroccan Arabesque skin on it, right? It has appropriate parking, it has some of these things that maybe we are challenged by because we have an organic, but authentic city center. I mean, there's not a lot of places that have that main street. And not only that, to the, to the, to the credit of those who planned the master planning of San Clemente, tell, I mean, it's really funny. I tell people, have you ever been to California? No. Have you, do you know about California? Yes. Okay, close your eyes and tell me what would be your quintessential proverbial in-your-head image of California? And they would say, I don't know, driving a convertible, like maybe it's a 1940s convertible, like Rain Man kind of thing, down a street. And there's all these little, you know, mom and pops, two-story buildings, maybe one-story buildings. People are coming and waving, you know, kind of Mayberry style. And then I go down the street and then I see the ocean. And I'm like, oh, I'm sorry, did you just describe San Clemente? I think you just described the ride down Del Mar to the J of the, of, of the, you know, the pier bowl. And the fact, and I think a lot of people also maybe don't realize this. Think about the fact that it is almost manipulative experientially. There's nothing more experiential than I drive down Del Mar and I turn, and the ocean is not given to me right away. I actually turn to the left a little bit and I start seeing the ocean. And then here's an added layer of discovery and surprise. Wow, what is this pier that is piercing right into the water, right? I mean, it, we have the authentic stuff here. And I've said this in many, many years. We have not even began to really, I don't want to use the word manipulate, it's not manipulate, like, like leverage the real gold that we have.
Not enough. What you just described is a quintessential California experience. And San Clemente is one of the earliest cities in San Clemente. And it has the classical Spanish colonial architecture, which is deeply rooted in our historical heritage.
Yep.
We, we are fortunate to have not just one, but two areas with those rich history. That is our downtown, which is pretty much developed and very enjoyable. And then we have northeast historical district to be established. And we have a few wonderful structures there. Some already in business, and some are being, currently being rehabilitated.
Yeah, I was, I was, when I, when I joined the historical site in 2003, Zain, the first thing I did was do a celebrate the Miramar event at the Talega Swimming Pool at the community center. And I purposely did not do a save the Miramar, but celebrate the Miramar, okay? Because I wanted to highlight what it was and how that building was instrumental in the city of San Clemente as a community, having something to look forward to and a symbol of coming out of the depression, because that building opened in 1930s, and it was. Because that building opened in 1930s and it was literally, like if you look at the commemorative program for that, for the Miramar, everybody was celebrating the fact that this was a people's house almost that was, that was being built. And there's a lot of things you and I will talk about off, off the camera. But you know, like there's, there was a, there was a crest on the side of the building. The building was going to be called the Hidalgo. The Hidalgo is basically the house of the nobility from the common man in Spain. You know, it, there was a lot of layers to this that was very community infused. And that was the first thing I got involved in. I was happy as heck to finally see some movement on that building in terms of adaptive reuse in 2020, 17 years later, right?
Uh, yes, I was, I was extremely happy about the development of Miramar Center. Um, being, uh, go through this historical rehabilitation to be used again. Those building had been sitting there for decades, vacant and is, is, becomes a dilapidated building. And it's just much like you were involved with it and you were involved with the Casa Romantica. Anytime I can be part of that process to make, to, to make it, to help and to help it, to come to fruition. I feel very honored. I feel very lucky that to, to be involved with that project. I was in design review subcommittee and we worked with the design architect and architect historian to went to go over the details and how, how we can best preserve the structure and how we can best utilize that structure.
Isn't it, isn't it, isn't it amazing?
It is amazing.
That, that there are things in that building that were there when it was open that are still there. Those light fixtures that are hanging, the, the artwork between the beams, the way that they basically ran the air conditioning systems through the false beams. I mean, there's a lot of interesting things about that building. Just like when we went through the process of adaptive reuse on the Casa Romantica. And a lot of stuff came out because of that. That is another layer to this history. And, and for those who say, well, that's neat, that's great, you know, but where are the jobs or whatever? Those are high paying jobs that require the, the skill set to do these things. These are, these are income generating monies that go back into the community. When we actually take on something like this. And, and the return on it after it is open, is anybody now arguing that the Casa Romantica is an asset to the community? Absolutely not. The casino is another one that was recent and I like would, I give credit to, to the Sadegys and, and you know, basically that what they have done with the casino. I mean, does anybody even question that those are successful operations now, both commercially and for the benefit of the city? Absolutely not. So thank you for your effort on that. I want to just thank you personally because it, it, it doesn't just happen. There are people that need to basically make it happen, such as yourself.
Now, I haven't heard any complaint about those things. In fact, the hotel of San Clemente, the, the, the courtyard you mentioned on downtown. And there was a breakfast place in the casino. Those are my favorite places to go because when you sit there, you bring a, bring a friend to sit there to have a meal. Not only you enjoy the food and conversation, but you're in the middle of history. And that, that gives you, gives you enriched experience. And that's all on this is about.
Well, let's, let's, let's also, let's also be honest, right? We also, we also bring the friends that don't live in San Clemente to those places because we want to tell them just how good we have it. Like, hey, look, see, this is what I get to experience every day. You know, you get to visit, I'm sharing it, but this is for, this is, I'm proud of my town. This is the stuff that I show. It, it, it really is a very unique place and, and you know, other than, you know, some of the, some of the sad, you know, conflicts that we have and the divisiveness. But like you said, it's a reaction, it, you know, trickles down from the natural, the national environment right now. We at the end of the day are a close knit community. Everybody is very engaged, which I will take every, any day. So let's switch for a minute here to that. So here you are, you've served on this, on the planning commission for five years, right? Do I have it all right? Five years? Okay.
A little over five years. This is my sixth year.
Okay, so you've served, you've served for, let's call it six years on the planning commission. You've seen a lot of stuff and from the, from the filter and the side of that, where the planning commission, basically for those who are not very clear, the planning commission acts as an advisory commit, uh, voice to the city council, right? Basically.
We, uh, there are two functions, a creative judicial function. We make recommendations to the city council regarding legislative stuff such as the ordinance. And the general plan and zoning. And then we also act as the creative judicial function, uh, which is to make a decision, make a final decision on project. Subjects who appeal to city council.
Right, because, because usually if it's not appealed at city council, then the planning commission, you know, decision basically stands as a direction to staff and to the developer. And you're working close proximity with those, all the parties involved. So you're really, you guys at the planning commission do a lot of the heavy lifting on this, to filter it through. And there's a lot of hours involved. And again, you know, want to make sure I, I, I acknowledge that and, and thank you for your service because it is a big deal.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. I probably spend about 20% of my time serving the community.
Well, well, I mean, I mean, I mean, Zane, let's, let's call it like it is, right? I mean, it doesn't just happen. I know, I know from, from experience that we don't, we don't have 200 historical buildings still around and vibrant part of our community and, and the fabric of San Clemente, just because it happened. There were a lot of people, a lot of energy, a lot of sacrifice in terms of time, commitment to keep the fabric of our lives in San Clemente, the, the, the quality of life that we enjoy and celebrate to happen. So to you, I do, I want to acknowledge you for that in your role.
For that part, I especially want to thank, thank you for, for the work down by Historical Society. Without, without your efforts and a lot of, uh, uh, voice, it cannot be heard. And that's very important for us to, to consider when we'll make a decision. A lot of times you guys are experts, you know more history than planning.
Well, and, but, but again, it's about the sharing of that. Like if we don't, if we don't share that, you know, if we don't, we're joking about the fact that you and I have the, one of these books, but you know, there's not a lot of them around. And he, and you asked me, he said, he said, oh, you have one of those? I said, no, no, I have three of them because I basically buy them every single time. I don't buy them and hold them. I have gifted them because that's again, part of that sharing of knowledge. Because if, you know, to, to expect the planning commission or even the city staff, right? Especially, you know, to, to be as immersed as some, as, as some of us that really are, have a passion for this. Part of our duty is to share it. Part of your duty is to share your professional expertise in safeguarding some of this stuff. So it doesn't just happen is my point, right? And, and.
Right, you have to advocate for, for those things. This is our political process.
Correct. And so, so here you are, very involved, very active. To those who ask, okay, why is Zane running for city council now? What do you say to them? I asked you that question yesterday when we were preparing for this and you had a very good answer. So would you share that answer with me, please?
Well, um, the reason I, I, I run for city council is I have the experience, I have the knowledge and have the fear. Um, that, um, I work quite well on planning commission, but it will be more effective on city council. And the city is facing a lot of challenges. Take, take examples, the toll road, the hospital and homeless, homelessness. Each of this issues are more or less related to land use of planning. And I'm a land use planner, I'm a planning expert on that. So, um, for a city council to have someone with this expertise, it will greatly, um, help the city council to make a good judgment. And that, that's the biggest reason because I can, I can bring those expertise and skills and experience to the table to help our community and to make a, you know, um, positive impact to it.
So let's, so let's talk about those three issues because I then want to move on to where you see the future is and where you see the opportunities are, right? What, we will, we will end on sort of a, sort of an inspirational note, if you will, okay? Because, and not to say that the solutions to these problems are not inspirational or cannot be, but let's talk about that, right? Because these are three issues that are very much part of the issues that are very front and center to people, right? So let's talk about, let's start off with the one, with one that's sort of the easiest, I think. Let's talk about the toll road, the 241, right? Now, it is supposed to dead, but it's, you know, like, it's like, you know, we're coming on Halloween. It's like a zombie. It pops up its head from the grave every, every 10 years or every five years, right? So let's talk about that. Where, where are you on the toll road? What do you think, where, where do you think we are on the toll road? What do you think we need to basically be able to do?
Well, our original plan is to connect to Interstate of Five around San Clemente. And I wouldn't oppose that. I think the city, um, the city supported that alternative.
You're talking about around, around the town?
Around the town, right, uh, from, from, from the south. But later on, uh, there were the challenges about the toll road going through environmentally sensitive habitats. So eventually that proposal was dead. By that time, TCA wants to run the toll road through the city. Uh, as a planning commissioner, uh, planning profession, I never understood that as a sensible, sensible alternative. Because we all know that the interstate freeway system was built back in 1950s also. And a lot of the city went through this atrocities, so to speak, because the, the freeway will cut through neighborhoods, uproot people, relocate them. And then that's, uh, you know, it's basically a huge scar on the, on the city's and a people's life. So that has been faded out, people no longer support those approach. And the planning pioneer, Jane, Jane Jacobs led a struggle against a low man hatting expressway. And she succeeded. At the beginning, people thought she's nobody. But with the average American, with the average citizen's support, and then she succeeded to stop that. So if you, you need to look no further in Southern California, just to take a look at the, uh, seventeen extension. And there's only a couple of miles gap to.
Yeah, through South, through South Pasadena.
And South Pasadena residents grouped together and started for half a century. And just recently, Caltrain defunded it, they just gave it up. So, um, in today's environment, uh, it's, it's never, I cannot imagine that it goes through San Clemente, goes through our beauty environment and, and open space.
So do you think, so do you, do you think we are done with it or do you think the threat is still?
Just as you said, it, it, it'll, TCA wants to come back.
The zombie.
So it's like a zombie. So we have to, um, permanently stop this one. The way to stop it, um, and there was some good effort in last year to amend our, um, free, um, street and, um, highway and the street code. California highway and the street code to amend the, the language to prevent them explicitly, prevent them from going through San Clemente. It went through the Senate, 23/8. But then when it reached the, the assembly, it, it was postponed to the next year.
Yeah.
So we have renewed that effort. As soon as I'm elected, then the new session of state legislature starts from this December. I will reach out to state legislatures and to have them to sponsor this bill again in both chambers, in both, in both Assembly and Senate to officially queue it off. Only then, then San Clemente can have a, um, assurance and a guarantee or, or peace of mind that it will never happen.
Yeah, it, it, it is, I will just say this about it because you know, you, I, I don't think anybody who's ever listened to the show or has ever met me for a little more than a half a minute would have any doubt where I stand on the toll road. Okay, I think it's pretty clear where I stand on the toll road. I basically hate the fact that they even thought that they could propose to run it through town. I am, I actually.
I imagine.
It, it, I mean, like, i- if I professionally and if you professionally showed up and proposed that kind of insanity to a client, we would be fired. Like, like I don't even understand how anybody got paid any kind of advisory, you know, fees to come up with that harebrained idea. I, I have a, I completely understand why, okay? I'm, I'm just, it's not gonna speak of ill of people, but it, it, it's an insane situation. And to completely terrorize a community. And that is what it is. It's emotionally terrorizing a community of San Clemente. To basically put them, subject them to this sort of continuous case of abuse, okay? By keeping them under pressure and stress from the fact that like a zombie, the walking dead can show up one more time every five years and propose some harebrained idea. I mean, to fly bridge, concrete fly bridges over the high school? Really? It, it makes no sense. Anyway, so I just, I, 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 I want, I want, again, thank you for your position because I think it is important for people to realize that the fight continues on this. It does not.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Well, you really should thank, thank some of the people, they're united. And there's a lot of people that's no toll road in San Clemente. And they led the effort. And the city, and the city council just basically listened to the people and followed their demand and to.
In fact, in fact, I will, I will tell you this and I will share this because people who are listening to this, maybe it's a nice reminder, okay? I almost, because we have had divisive, divisive election cycles in San Clemente. Last couple of election cycles have been divisive. There's been a division, you know, it's again, it's, it's sort of trickles down from the national, but we definitely have suffered internally. And we've had exterior influences that were trying to carry favor and basically stuck their fingers in our elections like the process. That being said, I almost wrote a thank you card to the toll road, Zane. I almost wrote a thank you card to the toll road, you know why? Because.
They eventually kind of have enough courage to make that decision.
No, 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 no. I wrote a, I almost wrote a thank you card to the toll road. Because the toll road fight against the 241 extension unified a divided San Clemente. It brought people that were on opposing sides on things before during election cycles and basically made them lockstep with one another. It, it, the toll road unified this community in a way that we can really be unified. And this is something that we should remember when we're about to basically, you know, scream at each other from across the street. The toll road, which is a real issue that is still around, unified this community in a way that we, when we are unified, can really bring power to the, to the cause. I mean.
That's, that's right. We have a lot of internal disputes, but when we face an existential threat, yes, we're unified.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, you're right, it is the people. And it, you know, there's so, so many to mention. I was, I've been involved with it, with the no, no on the toll road for a long time. There's so many people to, to, to mention, you know, Michelle Schumacher is one of them. Evo Keith was involved, you know, there's a lot of people that were involved. Another issue, and let's switch to the toll road. Another issue that is similar is the hospital. So let's talk about the hospital situation.
Sure, uh, you mentioned Michelle Schumer, I was, I was lucky enough, well, lucky. I, I, I'm happy to share with you that Michelle Schumer, uh, supported my candidacy and.
I'm not surprised.
Has to be here with all the members in no toll road.
Yes, she's a very, she's a very special lady and she has sacrificed a lot and her commitment is really very exemplary when it comes to this.
Huge sacrifice of her time to, to, to pursue this course. Now, come back to the hospital, going to the hospital. Hospital is a very controversial issue. At the time, hospital decided to close it because they couldn't be profitable enough. The city wants to keep them. So we, we, uh, the city tried everything in trying to retain them. We revised the design development standards, basically said, you can do anything you want on your land as long as you keep your hospital, i.e. the emergency room, that, that will really matter. The emergency room, uh, if you keep that, will give you a lot of leeway to develop your land. That didn't work out. And then we went to the state legislature. And we plead with them to allow San Clemente and allow memorial care to have a standalone emergency room in town. In other words, without other branch of what's usually required for a hospital. Just a, a emergency room. Because for people in southwest San Clemente or on the fringe, fringe of the San Clemente, such as the Talega area, the trip to existing hospital is, is almost 10 minutes. You add another nine miles driving to Michigan Hospital. That's a 20 minute drive. And now when you have a stroke, when you have a heart attack, and that, that could be a difference between life and death.
Absolutely.
So, um, the community is overwhelmingly supportive to keep that hospital. However, um, the memorial care is a nonprofit organization and they make their own decision. And they still want to make a profit. You know, it's a nonprofit organization, they still want to make profit for their own cause, right? So, so the city eventually decides to rezone that site to, to, with the emergency room being a mandatory element. And that brought us a lawsuit. And the city, I was a part of the decision to rezone it, I supported it. It's, it was unanimous. It was unanimous both in, on planning commissioning and on the city council. The city got, the city received a small victory, that the, the court upheld the validity and the legality of the rezoning. And then the city made a smart move to decide to settle with the hospital because we want to limit our legal cost. Not that it's not defensible. But faced on the multi-year litigation about a taking claim, so we reached a settlement. By, according to this settlement, the city had until the end of this year, next, next month, well, this December, to, to find a, another operator to take over the hospital. And we sent out a request for a proposal, and we received some lukewarm response. And we're, we're in discussion with one group, a former health group, to reopen that hospital. And they recommended us to, in order to get the fund to reopen it, they recommend us to form a health hospital district. In other words, the district will assess the properties, and basically, it's another assessment or tax, if you will, to, to fund this reopening or possibly ongoing maintenance, operation of the hospital.
Right.
So at that time, well, my position on this hospital is, we'll wait for the survey to come back. And the city is, is going to conduct a survey to gauge the amount of support of the community. At the time, everybody wants, pretty much everybody wants to, the hospital stay except for some business in the Chamber of Commerce. But when the people see a real price tag, some people will change their mind. So we want people to be fully informed with this situation and to find out if they're willing to support this hospital reopening, that, that they have to pay some to, to make it happen. So if the, if the, so they come back with a number that's close to the threshold of two-thirds. That's a high bar, by the way, very high bar. If it's close, I will support this measure to go to a balance measure to let the people decide.
So have you, have you received the results of that survey?
No, no, we, 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 we don't have it yet. But this is something that the existing council has pushed or, or, no. Leave us, leave it to the new council to deal with.
Oh, okay.
Much like a lot of other issues, and they think it's more appropriate for the new council to make.
So how, so what happens with that and your timeline on the hospital finding an alternative operator? Like, if you leave it to the next council to, to deal with, it won't really, really dealt with until the next council is seated. Will that not put you outside the window of, of finding an alternative operator?
Uh, yes, but the, the settlement agreement allows the city to pay fifteen thousand dollars a month to keep it as a status quo.
Oh, I see.
So if we are close to having a deal, and then we can, we can, we can pay the money to buy some time.
But, 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 but the point is that we are, we, it, it's, it's time sensitive, and we need to basically move on this to get consensus from the community. You know, the.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one of the top priority things that we just have to deal with as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, I, I will tell you, I, I, I agree with the, with the situation about the hospital needing to be, to provide those, those basic critical emergency services. My mother passed away in May. My father is eighty-four years old, and he lives at the top of Salvador. That extra five minutes of being stuck on the freeway is a matter of life and death. For, for people that, that are not connecting with that in their heads, just take a minute and understand that the city of San Clemente, like a lot of Orange County and South County, is aging. It's getting older. The average age of a person in communities along the coast is higher every year. And people are going to need to have very quick access to some of these life-saving services. We have the infrastructure or the space or the building already in place. Even if it changes, it gets adaptively used, like you said, for modernization. Because again, that's a building that's been sitting there for many years as well. So I cannot imagine that it will not have to go through some sort of adaptation. But it is critical, and if there's a tax impact on it, yes, of course. But your question is, are we getting a value return that is really important? I would be the first person to say absolutely tax, you know, put levy a tax on that because it has a direct impact on my family to have that facility nearby.
Oh, yeah, well, I, I'm sorry to tell about you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, so.
We're all, we're all getting, we're all, we're all getting older, Zane. None of us are getting out alive, so.
Yeah, there, there will be more needed to that emergency service room. As a response, the city has increased the personnel or fire origin because of fire origin of the youth, mostly, in most cases, for emergency medical services.
Right.
So, so if you support it, and so I would encourage you to talk to your friends, the neighbors, to have them support it because we need a two-thirds of votes.
I'm, I'm, I'm supporting it right now. That's why I asked you whether the survey is out. Because if the survey is out, I would, I would basically get it out in front of people, and I'm, I'm, I'm doing it right here openly. I, I would support that. I've supported the hospitals remaining in San Clemente. I understand the motivation by memorial care relevant to, you know, more aesthetics services and more medical suites and all that stuff. But we really are in a situation where we have an aging population, and we are basically in need of some of these critical services and an option to not having to go up all the way to Mission in case something, heaven forbid, happened.
Well, I completely understand your position. I'm, I'm more practical. If the survey come back shorter that threshold by a wide margin, then I, I believe the, the way to go forward is just to, you know, there's, there's not, no good alternative at that time, because the city doesn't have the money to protect the property. So if the, if the residents doesn't support it, and then the only way we can move forward is to reverse the rezoning and the less than memorial care to do what it wanted, and that is to build a medical facility without.
Maybe, maybe the city of San Clemente should basically look into providing an alternative to medical insurance and medical coverage by actually giving that as an option for their citizens directly and using that money to basically fund an offer of this nature. Because, because, again, I think what, what is, what is going to, it, look, it's demand and supply, right? At some point, the need is going to be so great that if you do not provide the service in a consistent manner that is life-saving, you will lose members, whether you are memorial care, whether you're insurance companies or whatever, and, and the, 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 the customer will make their voice heard. It's just, we're not there yet, and I agree with you. I mean, you have, we have, look, it's a democratic process. You have to see what the consensus is. I, for one, hope that we actually understand the value of having that in our community. Not only that, if we have it in our community, if San Clemente can claim that it has a medical facility that has emergency care within whatever, five-minute drive from any part of town, right? That becomes a destination for us to draw people that are older, that may want to relocate. And basically, now we are an attraction, right? I mean, we, we, you and I talked about this a little bit in terms of, in terms of, why would people maybe come to San Clemente?
That's right, and a lot, a lot of community, especially today's new master planning community, and that big draw would be a good school and a good medical facility. And you're essentially talking about the same thing, a community hospital.
Right.
So if, if it doesn't happen next year, then what I will do on the city council is to identify an alternative location, a suitable piece of land for, for a future hospital to happen.
Okay, so, so that's great. Those are, those are the two easy topics. Now, let's talk about, let's talk, let's talk about the homeless situation. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you have the mic, because it is, it is both an emotional and, and volatile. But it's really, it's really also unavoidable. I mean, we are all dealing with this. To a certain extent, I think the homeless issue has never been away. I mean, as, as much as, you, you're an urban, you're an urban planner. I would, I, I don't know personally, but I would say that, I would assume that the homeless issue has always been around for the time that people got together. There's always a fringe component that was either homeless temporarily or, you know, what they used to call, you know, temporary unemployment, because they're basically followed the seasons and harvests or whatever. I mean, we've always had a homeless issue, but we obviously have a very heightened homeless situation. So what would you do relevant to the homeless situation?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm saddened about the homeless issue. It's, it's a societal problem of our America, of our social and economic system. And to see the, the plight of human being is heartbreaking. So I, I generally want to help this situation. It's extremely complicated issue. It's a regional issue, it's a national issue, you could say. So there are a lot of people, you know, that, they, they enter this homelessness pool for different reasons, and some are, they're all related.
Yeah.
Some, some are mentally, mentally ill. Since the mental hospital was, the system was dismantled, the, the state didn't build the, the new system to accommodate these people. And at the time, they, they decided it's better to be absorbed by the society, but so, some, some are absorbed, and some are taken care of by a family.
Right.
But, but many are not. And then there's a drug addict. And then there are some people who, you know, free soul, who just want to live on the street. And then there are people who had a bad luck, and they lost a job, they had a health issue, a big deal, and they couldn't afford to stay in their home, and they ended up living on the street. So there are different segments of homeless population. My approach would be, first of all, we address inventory. And then, at the same time, we start working on the root causes to reduce the number of people becoming homeless. To address what, what's already in that homeless pool, it, it will be, it will have to be a multi-strong regional effort. For example, the, the mental facility and the mental health issue. What was, we start from education, educating our kids to stay away from, stay away from drugs. And to, as a council member, I would do as much as I can to limit the drug-related business in town. And, and we work with a nonprofit organization such as Wealth and Wellness and Prevention Center and to educate our kids to stay away from drugs. And then we encourage the facility, health facilities to provide more service to, to improve people's mental health. And then the, working with nonprofit organizations such as the FAM to provide some emergency assistance. While that leads to the prevention, so I'll talk about that later.
Right.
Homeless shelter, we need a regional solution to that. San Clemente seems to run out of suitable land. But a regional center is, is needed, because the law of the land now is, the Ninth Circuit is ruled that if the city doesn't have a, a emergency shelter, then it cannot enforce anti-camping ordinance. In other words, you have, you have no choice but to let them to sleep on the streets and the parks.
Right, if you're not housing them, you cannot deny them camping, yeah.
Right, and then where do they go? That's logic. So it's, it's a huge impact to people as a quality of life in town. So in order to solve that, we have to find a solution to emergency shelter. That's a short term. Well, that's an immediate solution to this problem, to accommodate them somewhere so that we can, we can move them away from the street, and the people can enjoy our beaches and the parks and the streets. The long-term one is, of course, the prevention. The prevention will, you know, when you fall off a cliff into that hole, it's very difficult to climb back, because it's a shock. Financially, psychologically, et cetera. So, so when you stay in the car or on, on the street, the element, you don't have protection from the elements. You're subject to a lot of things, and that affects your mental health, that affects, affects your physical health.
Well, and we, and we, and we're coming off, we're not coming off, we're in the middle of a pandemic where I would think that a lot more people are actually now subject to being at risk in that capacity because of financial burdens, because of health issues. I mean, it, it is, it, it isn't a problem that has not been compounded even further by the pandemic.
Yes, well, the state has a lot of intervention, you know, the emergency measures at this moment. And there, there are billions of emergency funds to try to accommodate and help them, but that's a temporary measure. And the long-term measure is, of course, prevention. For example, a, a, a nonprofit, nonprofit organization such as the FAM would provide emergency financial assistance just to keep them. When they are on the edge, they're about to fail, help them a little bit, and then pull them back and let them just stay in, in their house. So that way, and they don't, you know, they, it's, it's a temporary, a temporary measure that prevents them from getting into that situation. As the old saying, an ounce of prevention worth a pound of cure. So it's much cost-effective to help them from, from being in that situation. Of course, affordable housing is another facet of that problem.
Right.
You know, that's even more complicated. It's, it's very, it's, it's a complicated issue on its own, but that's sort of be part of that solution.
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think the, the, the receptiveness to looking for a, a regional solution is there now more than it has been maybe four years ago. It is, it is, the last couple of years, it's there. There's a, there's a lot of people that I know around the county that are involved in this. But it, yes, it still comes down to basically, again, somebody willing to basically educate the community that they serve, to stand up and basically take leadership on the issue. Because initial reaction to affordable housing, like I said before, is negative, not in my backyard. Don't put the, the shelter in my backyard, et cetera. But again, now I think we also have an additional opportunity, because a lot of people have been touched by the pandemic. A lot of people have been touched by the loss of job, by the, by the medical costs. You know, there are a lot of people that are, you know, I, I, I was on a panel, discussion panel for a gentleman that is running for city council in Fullerton. And he asked me to come on to talk about seniors and housing and, and homelessness. And, you know, I mentioned that one of the large, one of the growing categories of homeless is actually older women that are basically impacted by economic difficulties. And, and to your point, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. If you, if, and, 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 and that's from the cumulative cost to us as a, as a community. If we basically are able to help people from falling off the edge, it is cheaper for us than if we have now, they have now fallen, and now we have to take care of them that way. So.
Absolutely. The, the state is spending humongous money to deal with the existing homeless population. If we can cut the income stream into that pool, it will become a much easier problem for us to deal. They will not go away, but we can control that, the, the extent of this problem, the issue, at a much more manageable scale.
Okay, so let's, let's walk away from, because those are definitely issues that, that anybody running for city council, I think anywhere in Orange County, the toll road being one that's maybe more specific to us and the hospital. But the homeless issue is, I think, on everybody's plate. Medical cost is probably the same as well, and, you know, affordable healthcare and affordable housing, because the whole county is impacted by that. Let's talk, Zane, about what are you looking forward to in terms of opportunity, possible innovation, sort of towards a sustainable San Clemente? And I use the word sustainable not just in terms of a built environment, right? But in the role of city council, what are some, give me a little inspirations. Give me some of the stuff that you're kind of excited to, to, looking forward to, maybe attempt to bring to the table, conversations that you would like to start that are more future-focused than just purely problem-solving for right now.
Right, well, we have to deal with the problem at hand, but in the long term, my policy is going to improve the long-term prosperity through a combination of economic development and a conservative fiscal policy. My idea is that by, by having a surplus on our budgets, and then over the time, over decades, we can build up a additional financial reserve which will help the community to offer our future generation more, more choices. A lot of time, we're, our current problem, the city has forty-something million unpaid. A lot of time where our current problem, the city has uh forty-something million unpaid um pension liability. And a lot of a lot of citizens want to have our own police department, it's 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 a moot at this moment, we don't have a financial resource. When you have no no resource, you have no choice and you're stuck with what you have now. So but when you have the choice, you're in a better position, even if you don't wanna have your own police department, you're in a better position to negotiate. Uh if we want a community hospital, right now we have a rate tax to property owners. But if you have that financial reserve, you have a choice to, you know, ha- have a citizen to vote on. Whether you can use that cushion to fulfill that and those are the extremely important issues that uh that cost money. Uh so that's that's something I wanna work on uh as a as a long-term goal, that is to. Bring sustainability, not just the environmental, I'm all for uh environmental sust- sustainability and the clean ocean, the clean beach and removal of nuclear waste. But also for financial and economic, the sustainability, the 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 resiliency. Uh of our economy, of our the community and make it a healthy community, make it more resilient and make it more sustainable. For our long-term prosperity.
So give me, just give me a couple of minutes on on the the uh particulars of that, how do you see that achievable? And what are some of the things that are basically holding us from getting there?
Well, for for the, you know, it's it's a it's a. It's a policy, uh for example, the budget thing, and we have to be disciplined to to spend within our means. And in order to um to achieve a a surplus on our budget, we have to develop our econo- economy. Um one way to develop it is to accommodate more activities, not just a slew um. Having a little more a development on a utilized areas, but also, for example, promote our tourism. Um um prom- promote our experience-based uh development and development. Um and then, you know, just be disciplining spending. Uh envi- environmentally, uh I'm for. I'm for. Again, clean ocean, clean beach and a rem- removal of our nuclear uh waste. And uh diverse our energy purchase. And then um try to make our uh community more healthy, protect our open space. Allow people to uh to be able to and do more exercise in indoor and outdoor. Um.
I I I I the reason why I was asking is, no, no, I don't know, the reason why I was.
Maybe I didn't answer your question well.
No, no, you 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 did, it it and 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 let me let me, if I may, I think what you're also pointing out is. We are, we we kinda need to basically embrace our uniqueness, honestly, in San Clemente, we need to start. Realizing that we really have choices between a few things. And one of the things we have a choice in is constantly basically making everything more dense, more dense, more dense, you know, we, you know, another Italian restaurant, another. Brokerage firm, another, that's one way we can do about it.
No, that's not the way.
But that but that's not gonna work, exactly my point, the other thing we need to do, which we don't do very well. Is we need to understand that we are a unique destination and in fact, embrace that instead of fighting against it, like. Instead of saying, well, no, we don't re, you know, I mean, there were, there used to be days when we would have the fiesta. And 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 on Del Mar and the businesses would close because they didn't wanna deal with the with the people that were there. Like i- it was almost counterintuitive, there are places that would kill to have tourists come in. And we basically have issues with on the hotel side and whether we're going to really promote, the city of San Clemente started off as a master plan community. And the guy who developed it had a promotional book written specifically to get people to come to San Clemente. Right, there was a conscious decision by the city to promote itself, like Carmel by the sea basically promotes itself, like Solvang promotes itself. Santa Barbara promotes itself, we in San Clemente have not really done that, starting with. The fact that we have an open-air experiential shopping experience right through the middle of downtown. We have another opportunity with with different uh options and opportunities in North Beach, that could be Destination District, Historical District, right? But we should be embracing that because that is really the sustainable future economic engine that is reasonable, that is respectful. That is sensitive to what it is that we are as a community, but we don't really push it and I agree, I I mean, you mentioned it and I and I and I'm, I absolutely support your thinking. That is something we need to do, the open space, the quality of life, those are things that are meaningful, but we should be basically leveraging and promoting them.
That's right, we cannot freeze our town back in history, so it has to adapt to a new life and a new reality. But one thing is for sure that we uh we have best village by the sea character and a vision and that will be preserved and I will do everything. To try to preserve that vision and protect the people's quality of life.
But we're not, but we're the 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 word preserve sometimes, Zane, maybe is is misleading. Because it almost gives the impression that everything's gonna be behind rope and it's going to be basically like a museum, right? The thing that is.
No, 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 it's it's a adaptive areas and a historical rehabilitation and et cetera too.
Right.
Adapt to the new reality and new and the need of our future future generations.
Well, the 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 beauty of.
Change.
Yeah, the beauty of San Clemente is, and I used to say this and I think it is very true as a slogan. It's living history, like you walk through the history, you live through the history, you know, it's and and for those who believe that history is a stagnant thing. I I I ask you to think about places like, you know, Italy, Rome. Communities where you literally can walk by a four-hundred, five-hundred, eight-hundred-year-old building. That has a showroom that is basically selling high-end modern LED light fixtures in the glass, right, I mean.
Yeah, but something like, it's it's a living history and it's a dynamic, yes.
Yeah, and that is, that is, I think, the vision for San Clemente. Where we can basically chart and write our own future on our own terms and not sacrifice our quality of life, but we have to genuinely embrace that.
We can achieve both, we will not lose our identity, uh at the same time, we will have to adapt to the new life, yes.
Well, my friend, I appreciate you taking the time to be on with me and I wish you luck in November, it's been a pleasure to have you on the show, it really has.
Thank you, it's my pleasure to be with you.
Thank you so much, uh uh again, everybody, check out Zane's website, it's right there behind me for city council, woo for city council twenty twenty dot org and. Uh go to his company website, it's right there again behind me, Z W A D A design dot wix dot com forward slash home. Check out some of their work, but uh definitely find out more about your candidates, we will have a few more on uh between now and the election, I really, really enjoyed this. And uh and and I again, wanna thank you for your service to San Clemente and I look forward to talking to you more.
You're welcome.
All right, you take care, my friend, thanks, everybody for joining us, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.